From the sign contractor, the Sons of Italy, right? I saw what your look, I saw the look in your eye.
It's adjustable, so they've confirmed that the lighting levels are adjustable, but we're waiting for us back some things.
I noticed that in my address later today. And I don't think I saw them either, except for right.
It sounds like the way they first go in is kind of at full power.
It is, I think, in their first kind of testing it. And one of the light colors is green, which just says, yeah, just visually.
Good evening and welcome to the December 5th study session of City Council, City of Wheat Ridge. We start, as we do every study session, with an explanation why the mayor's not here. No, the mayor is blocked in and unable to get her car out from where it is. And so when she gets unblocked, she shall be here. And in the meantime, we will move on without her. And start with citizens' comment on agenda items. I've got one person signed up, Richard. Yep, come on up. You can come to the podium and say your name, spell your last name and your address.
Sure. Is this on? Is this on? I'm Richard Appetball. I own brewery Ricoli at 4335 Wadsworth Boulevard.
And this is, yeah, you have a chance to speak for three minutes, so go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I just found out about this meeting tonight. Not sure, we didn't get anything in the mail, us and Colorado Plus. We kind of found out this roundabout. So we're here to kind of just express our concern a little bit and hope that we can have some input into developing some of the rules that are going to define breweries in Wheat Ridge. We were the first brewery that opened. And as you may or may not be familiar with us, we started really small. And because you didn't really have much in the way of regulation, it allowed us to be able to open. And we've kind of since grown from the size that we started at and wanted to keep doing things better and better every time that we make a step for growth. So I just want to voice my opinion for, I saw a lot of these examples of what other cities are doing and how they're laying things out. I just hope you keep in mind that, keep it possible for people to start small and grow. Distribution is a big part, even though some breweries sometimes seem like just restaurants at the front. Beer production is sometimes pretty vital to a restaurant's survival. It's one of the most profitable things that they can make. So if they can actually produce a nice product and start to distribute a little bit, distribution can occur in regular vans, minivans. They don't have to be semis or anything. So try not to be scared about some of these terms that imply big business. A lot of these breweries really approach it a step at a time. They kind of grow. And when things start to get congested, they look for a place to move to, to make it easier and better on the community for large-scale distribution and things.
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
Okay, we only had that one person signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on agenda items before we get into the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on through the agenda, starting with staff reports. Excellent. And so to number two, small-scale alcohol production facility regulations.
Yes, so thanks for being here. I'm sorry if you got late notice, but glad you got notice and were able to come. Hopefully, the goal of what we're doing, or what we're proposing for council's consideration tonight in regards to what we're calling small-scale alcohol production is to be a little more permissive in our zoning code and really just kind of clarify some ambiguities. These are our two microbreweries, both produce beer, sell beer, and do some distribution, as you've described. And really, when you look at our zoning code, it doesn't really say that that's permissible to do. They're obviously a fairly small scale, which is great. They've been great additions to the community. And we want to kind of acknowledge that we think that we can make some amendments to the zoning code that would just say that's appropriate in certain zone districts. So that's really kind of where we're headed. Obviously, Colorado has really seen a boon in this area over the last many, many years, really. I mean, we've been, I think, an industry, folks like these have been industry leaders on a national front, maybe first in the beer realm, but also micro wineries, micro distilleries as well. We think by and large, that can be a pretty good tourism base. It can be a pretty good economic development base, just great places to build community and for people to go and get some hands on some locally-produced product. And really can be a really good use in many and most of our commercial corridors. So as I mentioned, Wheat Ridge's zoning code currently is just, is kind of silent to this, completely silent. We've allowed on kind of an ad hoc basis, these two folks to enter our community and produce at a fairly small scale, most of which is consumed on-site, some of which has been distributed as well. And they've been quite successful and we're thrilled with that. We've also recently granted approval, though they've not moved in yet, but for a micro-distillery to go into a kind of a commercial industrial building on West 44th Avenue as well. Again, at a scale that we just felt was appropriate with that zoning district. The zoning in that particular property is a planned commercial district, but it contemplates kind of a mix of industrial and commercial uses. So we felt like it would be appropriate in that location. As the gentleman points out, I think really where we start to get into a gray area is when that distribution becomes significantly more impactful at a certain scale. So we've, our research has really been focused on, what is the appropriate scale to allow these to occur in more of our commercial districts or our mixed-use districts? So we've proposed some, Lisa Ritchie is obviously here and she's really the technical expert on this, having done all the research. So she's researched between five and 10 communities along the front range. Perhaps not surprisingly, we landed kind of heavily on Fort Collins, who's been in this business for a while and has been successful with many breweries that have, that have obviously significantly scaled up as well. So the numbers in terms of what those caps that we're proposing that would be placed on the amount of production in those three different categories have really been borrowed from Fort Collins regulatory environment. But they're also similar in several other jurisdictions as well. You know, it's a number, we don't know if you've got it exactly right. We have talked to the staff at Fort Collins. They've not had, they felt like it's worked well for them for, whatever that number is, 15 or 20 years that they've been in this regulatory environment. So that's kind of where we're starting. We certainly would welcome more input. This is our first discussion with council this evening. We're, from a kind of a zoning standpoint then, if we're, what we're proposing to do is basically say that if you are doing one of these land uses, that there's really two business models. That one is primarily you're an eating establishment. We're changing, we're proposing to change the code to basically say, if you're an eating establishment, you can produce limited amounts of these three products as an accessory use to your principal use, which is really probably the Colorado Plus model. And, you know, a very common model across the state in the front range. So we're saying that is one use that would be permitted in most of our commercial and mixed-use districts. The second would be where the micro-distillery or micro, the production is really more the principal use up to those three different scales that are listed in the staff memo. Provided that you have a taproom, you again would be allowed in most of our mixed-use and commercial districts as a use by right, or in some of our lower-intensive uses or districts as a special use permit. And then above those scales, you'd really be considered an industrial use and be allowed in the IE, industrial employment districts. And then a third category is that if you are a micro-distillery, but you don't have a taproom. So you don't have that kind of direct-to-consumer component, which we think is important on our mix, in most of our mixed-use districts and commercial districts, where we want that kind of street-level activity and just people that are frequenting those. If you don't have a taproom, then you similarly would be allowed, as drafted in our industrial employment, in our mixed-use commercial interstate-zone districts, so some of our more intensive-zone districts. Again, only if you're just choosing that there's no taproom component, so you're not generating any kind of ground-level activity. Two other minor, I already mentioned the amendment of the ED established. One other minor amendment, Robin is here from our clerk's office. We got an opportunity to sit down with him several weeks ago, and he's a real great resource. If you don't know, he came to us from the state. So he is our resident expert as when it comes to all liquor laws. So we learned a lot. I don't think we retained all of it, but he's got a lot of information on that. So there have been some recent amendments to the state liquor codes that we also need to kind of tweak our zoning code to just kind of accommodate some of those changes at the state level to liquor loads, liquor codes, excuse me. So that's why we're here before you tonight, is trying to just kind of make it clear that we think these are good additions to our community potentially and at a certain scale, just allow them as a use by right.
Comment or questions?
Do we have samples? Available for sale as we speak.
Thank you. I guess my question is, relates to the fact that it's silent as it's currently written, what's wrong with it being silent on this issue? And how many instances of this type of use is it, is there a threshold that we have to meet in order for us to begin to look at a particular use and changing the zoning to make sort of room for this use within the zoning code? Because to me, it seems as though we do have several entities that are making use of this type of sort of use within their property, but it's not necessarily a ubiquitous use throughout the city. It's literally three at this point. So I don't see how we're not necessarily seeing a wave of these applications. So I don't know how we're, how are we, how are we coming about the approach to this as though this is something that we need to be regulating in a zoning process?
A couple of things. It's a great question. Silence in the zoning code doesn't necessarily have to be a problem, to your point. I mean, there's plenty, we don't list absolutely everything in that zoning code. And we have to make interpretations as to what's an appropriate similar use. And I have that discretion. And we've used that discretion in these two instances and with the other distillery that I just mentioned that we hope moves forward on that 44th Avenue location. I think the primary, and I would guess, and I'd love to hear if you choose to engage the audience, what their production volumes are. But my guess is that the production volumes that we're proposing be that allowable as a use by right would be substantially below where their production values sit. So it's really a matter of clarity. I don't think that we've had people walk away from the city, but there's certainly been more inquiries to our office than just these two folks and the other distillery that's moving forward, we hope. And we haven't been able to give them a real clear answer, right? When would too much be too much, right? And we'd have to use that discretion in the other direction, which is to say, actually, we think that feels like distribution. That's a little too much like Coors or Rocky Mountain bottling, or whatever the case may be. And we're going to have to say no. And we'd rather not have to say no, but that discretion just kind of only goes so far.
So if Coors wants to move from Golden to Wheat Ridge, we can have that discussion?
We can have that discussion, but probably north of I-79 and 38th Avenue, right? So that's our hope, is just that we're able to give people clear direction. If we have the next Breckenridge Brewery that wants to fully comply with our regulations, but we know that it's clear that they can, and we can give them that answer.
A little more seriously, if you all remember hops that used to be out on West Colfax, how would an establishment of that size and scope, where it's basically a food distributor, you know, an eatery, where would they fit into these different categories? Or is that a separate category all by itself?
Lisa says she has some comparison facilities that might give a good reference point.
Yeah, part of our research kind of entailed that. What are some facilities throughout the state region that we can wrap our heads, sorry, that we can wrap our heads around? So essentially, the, as Ken mentioned, the revision to the definition for eating establishment to allow accessory alcohol production. If the primary use is an eating establishment, it just would be covered by, you know, any development standards related to that particular use. So if you're talking more of the brewery facilities, on the Brewers Association website is where I found these. But for microbreweries, which are the threshold that we would be proposing to be capped at 15,000 barrels annually, Denver Beer Company in Denver, Dry Dock, the South Dock in Aurora, which I believe is the original one. They've since expanded. Epic in Denver, Odyssey Beer Works in Nevada, Tommy Knocker up in Idaho Springs, Twisted Pine in Boulder, and Upslope in Boulder. So I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with those facilities, but those all would fall within the microbrewery, as well as Ricoli's is also in that threshold. No, Oscar Blues is, actually, sorry, I've got that one, have it here. Sorry, Oscar Blues is classified as a regional. So the one up in Longmont, it's, again, this is where the threshold gets a little hard to decipher, but it's between 15,000 and 6 million. So they call this a re, yeah, exactly. They call this a regional brewery. And so New Belgium, Odell, things like that. And those are all much larger than I think what we would envision, as well as then you get into the Coors facilities, which are a separate threshold above that, above 6 million.
Let me just add one thing, and it'll be up to council to decide whether they engage the public. But, and I think there's two options for that type of a user, right? Because I don't know what scale Breckenridge Brewery is down in Littleton, but, you know, I think most people would probably say that was a pretty nice addition to the Littleton community. So one, find a property that's zoned that industrial employment zoning designation. Or two, do a planned district, right? So that we can't get everything right in what we call straight zoning districts. And the planned development district regulations still have a role. And that's not what I would describe as an onerous process. So they'd still have an option to come with us with a very specific business model if they're over that 15,000 barrels a year and show us how they can fit in with, in whatever location they think that they want to go.
So before, I want to just continue to go around and make sure that we're asking questions of staff. And then to the extent that we want to hear from some of the folks who are here who might give us some of their perspective, we'll do that as a second step, if everyone's okay with that. But let's continue to kind of exhaust the conversation as it relates to staff first. And I think I saw your hand up, it's happy.
So who then, who regulates whether they're doing 15,000 barrels or less? Is that the Colorado State liquor?
I would let Robin answer that. That was a question that we asked the City of Fort Collins staff, is how do you essentially kind of manage these over time? And they sounded honestly, you can tell a little bit based on their building permits. You know, we'll have an understanding of kind of what the production volumes are based on their original building permits. But to date, they don't do a high level of follow-up, and they've had no issue by not doing that.
I think that I would say, in general, I'm supportive of being able to put something in our code so that not only people who are coming know what to expect if they would like to open something, but also for our establishments already to know that it's not just some willy-nilly decision where, you know, some company can come in and do stuff that they were originally told they couldn't do, or something like that. And so then it'll be fair, I guess, I would say, equal playing ground. That's why I support it.
I have a couple of questions. So our definition, is this our definition of a taproom? Because in Denver, a taproom, you can only sell the liquor, your liquor there, but you can't have a kitchen. So I'm just trying to understand a little bit better all these different definitions here.
I believe it's the definition, I can't remember exactly who's, we kind of borrowed that from, likely, probably Fort Collins. I can take a minute and look through my notes to see. But it might not match Denver. And again, the state has separate definitions for a lot of these as well. Where we would need to make sure we're aligned. There was a lot of variability in the definitions throughout. And ultimately, it would need to comply with state liquor laws, too, as far as all of the specifics of what can be off and on.
No, there's so much to think about. So if you're a brewery and you want to open a taproom, do you still have to go through the same licensing?
For the state liquor licensing?
Yeah, yep.
I would defer that one to Mr. Eaton.
Okay.
The front row. The wholesale manufacturing type license is only required to go through the state level. They send a salesman application to us, basically allowing us to okay that license permit. But that's all we have to deal with. If it's a brew pub, distill pub, then it does come through the locals first, then goes to the state for final approval.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think it's a good idea for us to do something, being proactive, thinking and anticipating the future. We don't know, you know, what else is going to come to us. We are growing, so I think it's good. And I do support being proactive and having something on the books. Thank you, Robin.
To answer your kitchen on that question, the kitchen, the state doesn't require any kitchens to be at the manufacturer facilities, distilleries, wineries, breweries. But they do mandate that 15% of food sales come from brew pubs. So there's the food requirement, but there's no kitchen requirement for brew pubs or breweries.
So that could be like food trucks?
Food trucks. But everything, you know, if it's brew pubs, they're 20%, 15% has to be bought through the licensee by the customer.
Okay.
So that's how they get their 15% food requirements.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
I support putting a framework in place. And I think one of my questions is, by putting the framework there and by putting this into the code, are we placing more hurdles for a small business? Or are we just placing definitions in there? I mean, it's not going to be more of an expense or more hurdles for them, will it? For the small businessman who wants to start up?
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, it's really just, as Lisa alluded to, I mean, I don't think it's our intent to micromanage their kind of business model. It's really just, when they come in and ask the zoning question, we say, are you going to produce less than 15,000 barrels of beer a year? They say yes. We say, you're permitted to use.
Okay, that was my question, that we're just putting some definitions into the code. And I fully support it. I do have a question, that if somebody, hopefully, came in that wanted to do a bigger production, then they would be requested, if they did not fall under these guidelines, they would have to submit a different type of application?
They could look for property-zoned industrial employment.
Okay.
And that would be their option if they were above those thresholds. Or they could consider, if it was more of a hybrid model, if they were, you know, having some retail component as well, they just, their production levels were above that 15,000, they could look at a planned industrial development as well, or a planned commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification while we're on the subject, and you mentioned it in your initial breakdown, but in the charts that you've shown us, whether it's commercial, industrial, or mixed-use districts, there's mostly permissible uses. There's a couple of special uses. Can you just kind of clarify, kind of where, again, where the special use?
Yeah, there's two special uses, and as council, I think, is aware of it. Special uses don't, that doesn't necessarily have to be a very onerous process either. But the NC neighborhood commercial and RC restricted commercial, our zone districts that we've had in place for many, many years, to some extent, they're not as frequent out there on the ground as they used to be, just because some of those properties have been rezoned at the owner's request to mixed-use neighborhood, just because that is a little more flexible. So that's occurred on Harlan and 44th. We've had a number of those rezonings that council's approved over the years. But those are our two most limited commercial zoning districts, neighborhood commercial and restricted commercial. And just given that, we really wanted to, they really kind of tend to be kind of embedded in neighborhoods. So that was the one instance where we wanted, we thought a special use, which again starts out as an administrative review and potentially approval, would be appropriate.
Other questions or comments?
I'm still just kind of not clear, and then, let me just make a hypothetical here so I can explain. Let's just say you had an outfit like the old Marx, where it was a restaurant. It was an eatery and zoned as an eatery, basically, even though it had a liquor license. And they decided in order to keep up with the times or to enhance their marketing, to put a brewery on-site as part of their operation, would they be involved then with a zoning change? Or if someone came in new and wanted to buy Marx Building and have both a brewery on-site and a restaurant, would there be, would they have to go through a rezoning process? Would the zones conflict at all?
I think the quick answer is no, the zones wouldn't conflict at all. I mean, there's probably some nuances to those different business models and what their production levels are. But as long as they're, if they're principally an eating establishment, then we're just adding language or proposing that language that say, you know, by the way, you can do it as an accessory use. And we don't try and micromanage in terms of what is accessory. I think we'll, you know, we'll just work with them on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
So if they, so you're saying they could use it as an accessory use? And we're not defining how, how much that is, as long as it's under 15,000 barrels, the accessory use?
Correct. Because those two things kind of work together. So if it, you know, there's a lot of different business models out there for this. And, you know, how much food there is and isn't, the state has, obviously, as Robin has explained, different rules on that as well. So you'd be under one of the two definitions, right?
So if it, so let's say that they, let's say some, maybe somebody wanted to grow. And so then they wanted to do more production, but it'd still be under the 15,000 barrels. It's still considered part of the accessory use, and we're not, we're good with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Now, take Mr. Ricoli for example. You know, he has a brewery license and a wholesale license, will manufacture malt liquor and wholesale license. If he wanted to grow and expand, he can basically separate those two businesses and do his manufacturing at a complete, you know, if he's going to go over that 15,000, he can go down to, you know, I-70, the corridor down there, and have his manufacturing facility and still keep his tasting facility, even though it's not connected to his manufacturing license, still keep his wholesale where it's at now, because that's the taproom. So if they want to do and grow, it's, you know, do we, I think we want to put a true manufacturing, you know, facility somewhere out of the norm area, you know, for the corridor areas, and then allow the tasting and, you know, on-premise establishments to have those, you know, unregulated, basic establishments somewhere for the consumers, you know? Because I know there's a lot of places that, a lot of cities that mandate that true manufacturing areas be zoned or be added to the commercial areas strictly. And there's a lot of reasons, you know, flammable liquids, smell, odors, that kind of stuff. But it's not so much when they're associated with a brew pub or distill pub, those types are usually zoned, you know, commercially-used mix.
So let me just ask one question of staff and then of council. For staff, there's three questions here, which we may or may not have answered yet, which we should get to before we're done. However, assuming that we answer these questions one way or the other, what are the, what are the next steps for you and how this would progress through adoption or change, so that we just understand what, to the extent there will be either additional public processes or additional... additional public processes, or additional comment periods, or any of those other things? If you could highlight that, I will then ask council if you want to invite anyone else up to talk.
Maybe I, if I could start with that first. I just want to apologize to our business community if you felt like you were gone around, and that wasn't the intention to bring up any surprises to you. This was really, this was the first opportunity we had to bring this topic up to city council, and we didn't want to spend too much time on it if council didn't want to address the issues, so, and can speak to the process going forward. But if they nod their head and say yes, please go forward. We'll involve you and provide, get input from you guys on any draft ordinance. Okay?
Yeah, just echo those, those comments. And the next step in the process, we'd certainly be glad to sit down with these folks and see if, what kind of substantive input they have, either here tonight or at a subsequent meeting. But typically, what we do next, and what we propose to do here, is if it's, there's council support, we take it to a planning commission study session and really have a similar discussion. And if they're kind of supportive, or if they have ideas for improvements or changes, make those and get it in ordinance form. Then there'd be a public hearing before the planning commission, and then planning commission's recommendation coming from that public hearing would go to city council for consideration of an ordinance at a first reading and then a public hearing as well. So at a minimum, we'd anticipate opportunities for public comment at the planning commission study session. That's not as formal of a public comment opportunity as is at a city council study session, but, and then more formally at the two public hearings, one before the planning commission and one before city council.
Tim?
I think Robin brought up a really good point, and that is the issue of smell. Do any of the cities have regulations regarding smell?
None that we identified.
I'm wondering if we ought to consider that. I worked in a homeless program that was right next door to the old Breckenridge Brewery, and it was very, very smelly. And I think we probably ought to consider that.
Sounds like money to me.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, we've had some good questions and some good input. It seems like the fundamental consensus question is whether or not to move forward through the process that Ken just outlined. So we can, we can certainly take that consensus in just a second. But if, if anyone wants to discuss whether or not we get more input from the folks that are here tonight, we can, we can do that as well.
I'd ask that we get more input from the folks that come here tonight, just because they've been able to take the time to come in tonight.
There it goes. Okay. Well, actually, yeah, no. Richard just worked on. Okay, well, that's fine. You need to, so we need to kind of clear up some space here and get you a microphone? You can, you can go there, sure.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much.
And Eugene, do you mind?
Yeah, my name's Eugene Kahng, K-A-H-N-G, and I'm the owner-operator of Colorado Plus Brew Pub. And so pretty much, my concerns were addressed about possibly expanding and doing a, another facility on site. So you all answered that, and, you know, it looks like it depends on the, the production size, 15,000 barrels, and that's the threshold. Is that correct?
Those we can consider. It's not defined.
Okay. So would there be, as far as like, any other regulations? So as long as it's on one address, that would be fine. It would have to be on one address, not two separate addresses. Say your restaurant's on one address, the back, you know, another parking lot's a different address, that may be an obstacle. Would it have to be on one address there?
Eugene has been working with us over the last, what, at least a year, right, about considering expanding his production facility on site. And we've been through a series of different iterations in terms of whether it's an addition to the building, if so, which size of the building, or if it's an independent building on the site, all of which are potentially good options, all with kind of their unique challenges. So I'm not sure that this ordinance necessarily impacts those discussions with you one way or the other, neither negatively nor positively per se. So I think we'll just have to keep working through those issues in terms of the building code issues, and, you know, he's been dealing with the potential for additional water taps and sewer taps, if it's in a separate building. So I think, you know, with policy direction from council tonight, makes, would make it clear to us as we move forward that they're supportive of these types of activities, which I think just makes us all the more motivated to figure out some solutions for you.
Great, all right.
Hang tight for just a second while we have Eugene at a microphone. Are there any questions specifically for Eugene?
Do you have an idea of the, not to give away trade secrets, but of a limitation of a 15,000 barrel production cap? Would that be a hindrance to your business model in any way?
No, not at all. Yeah, we want to stay a brew pub. We don't want to, you know, we're not for distribution, so we want to keep everything on site. For us, it'd be fine. You know, for a place you mentioned, like Breckenridge Brewery, for them, it might be an issue. But yeah, because those guys, you know, they have the brew pub, and then they have that production facility, so.
Okay.
I got one. Have you looked into getting an alternating proprietor permit?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Have you looked into getting an alternating proprietor permit to have another licensed malt liquor manufacturer make your beer?
I have not.
I'll give you my card.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks for, and Richard, if you wanted, you can get back up and...
Thank you, Eugene.
If you have any questions from the discussion, or anything that you were unable to get into your initial piece?
No, earlier, when I wanted to interject, I just really wanted to get some perspective on the numbers you're talking about. You know, 15,000 barrels, that's a pretty reasonable limit. You know, in my case, where I'm at, you know, by the time I'm approaching 5, 6,000 barrels, I couldn't even do that at my place right now, you know. I'd be really stretched to do 1,000 barrels. So once you start rounding, you know, 10,000 barrels, you really are talking semis at that point. So 15,000 is probably a pretty good limit. As long as we're not limiting the ability for the person to self-distribute, I guess the Colorado law says you can go up to 100,000 barrels roughly a year and self-distribute before you have to work with a distributor. But, you know, that's a lot of beer, and there's a lot of work going on with that, you know. And, you know, I'd be definitely looking for an industrial area well before that 15,000 barrel mark, if I was doing that much, because, you know, I'm hoping, since we did that whole gluten remove thing, we're hoping to actually become a major distributor, yeah.
And any additional questions for Richard?
And as far as the, working with the city and developing some specific language around these ordinances, would both you and Eugene be willing to work with the city in developing what those would look like, and defining what that might be?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Richard. And again, thank you all for coming, coming tonight. Okay, so I think we still perhaps need a consensus direction. Ms. Hoppe?
I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward addressing small-scale alcohol production in our zoning code. All those in favor? Beer, cheers. Thank you.
Fantastic. And staff, is there anything else that you need from us tonight?
No, thank you very much.
Excellent. And we are going to move on to scheduled item number three with your real leader.
Thank you. I think you were doing a pretty darn good job. Did I miss any wonderful public comment?
Yes.
All kinds. All about beer, and before. Well, I'm kind of excited about item number three. Yeah, yeah, good for us, huh?
Good.
Lisa, do you want to?
I'm going to kick it off, but I'm taking Lisa's thunder here. She's the lead on the research on both of these, so we'll lean on her again. So another kind of, I guess, unique topic to talk to council about tonight, but one that we've frankly been thinking about for quite some time. You know, over the, really the last 10 years, the city has created more of a design framework for the city to ensure that the development and reinvestment that we see in our city is of high quality. And that's taken a number of different forms. In 2007, the city adopted by ordinance and by reference, the Architecture on Site Design Manual. And that was really the first time that we had a set of design rules that applies to new private development on private property, typically commercial and multifamily. It doesn't apply to single-family and duplexes. We more recently updated it a couple times along the way, but more recently to accommodate industrial or heavy commercial development. And even as recently as about a year ago, we modified some of those regulations as well. In particular, we talked to council about our desire to kind of fine-tune some of the regulations pertaining to the self-storage facilities. So it's a working document, but one we think, you know, gives the city the tools to ensure that we have high-quality private reinvestment in our community and along our commercial corridors. We've also adopted a parallel set of regulations called the Streetscape Design Manual. That was in 2011, and that really regulates what street improvements are going to go in the public right of way. So street trees, street furniture, sidewalk dimensions, and that applies to several specific corridors, as well as generally in the city. So it applies to improvements that go in the public right of way, but those investments that are typically going to be made by a private developer as part of redevelopment or development of property. So we think those have been good things. We also adopted in 2010 new mixed-use zoning districts, which have been heavily used on our commercial corridors, Wadsworth, 38th Avenue, and we think have been effective. And really, they incorporate, kind of embed in the zoning document, a pretty similar kind of regulatory framework that the ASDM do as well. It just applies to a different set of properties that are zoned under the mixed-use designation. So the ASDM applies to everything that isn't zoned that, so things that are zoned Commercial 1, or RC, or NC, or even R3, if it's a multifamily development. And the mixed-use embedded standards apply. But from a substantive standpoint, they're actually quite similar, and in fact, borrow from each other. The city also has design standards in place that regulate stormwater detention facilities. Generally, these are pertaining kind of to engineering design standards, detention pond capacity, you know, just other kind of technical standards related to, you know, how you meet our stormwater, both state and local, stormwater detention requirements, or stormwater quality requirements. As you can imagine, as a related topic, you know, any kind of a site development or redevelopment includes some level of site grading, right? And that often is related to creating those stormwater detention facilities. It's also just related to other factors. I mean, sites just have to be regraded as part of a design process and redevelopment process. Often, those include retaining walls as well. And we've just never had any kind of, I'll say, aesthetic regulations in regard to all those facilities. So, you know, pretty much you have to come in and meet whatever the capacity requirements are for stormwater, or whatever the design requirements are in terms of how you don't impact the neighboring property with your detention, that it's, you know, that it's designed to not negatively impact other properties. But we haven't really looked at that in any kind of an aesthetic way. We think that there's probably been a few maybe missed opportunities to, with some minor adjustments to some of those facilities, and some locations of retaining walls that have occurred adjacent to public sidewalks, or transitioning to adjacent properties where that transition is just frankly awkward, you know, maybe negatively impacts that adjacent property. And we included some graphics in the packet that we think address, you know, both some good examples, and maybe some less-than-ideal examples as well. Anytime we're looking at creating a new regulation, or new, you know, regulatory requirements for the city, we're also very cognizant of the fact that that's going to impact private property rights, and just the feasibility of project development, project costs, those are all important factors as well. So just want to kind of acknowledge that. But, but we think that on some of these infill projects, that we can just do a little better, a little better design, in terms of minimizing some of the visibility of some of the large concrete structures that you see, or maybe, you know, concrete retaining walls that, you know, just feel too close when they're adjacent to a public sidewalk that gets a lot of use, you know, where you could have just tiered a wall, a three-foot wall and a two-foot wall, as opposed to a five-foot wall, and it would have just felt better from an urban design perspective. You know, I don't want to say that we think there's, there's been travesties out there that have occurred. I think it's just, we look at a couple of projects that have been recently approved and completed, and we think we could have done them just a little bit better. We don't want to create a regulatory environment, if council is supportive of this, that, that makes it difficult to do infill development. There's a couple of factors in Wheat Ridge that make it important, frankly, to be creative in how we do these facilities. You know, we're often dealing with very constrained sites in terms of the acreage, and you, you need to be efficient in terms of how you design retention ponds, so that you don't, we don't have the luxury of hundreds of acres of land where you can, you know, design a beautiful rolling hill kind of detention pond that, you know, looks very bucolic. It's just, that uses up too much land. So that's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to strike a little better balance, we think. We're also cognizant of the fact that we've, we've seen a number of kind of similar buildings, but that have had the same types of impacts. So I don't want to call out in a negative way, specific projects, but the, but the Morning Star project on 38th and Kipling, the other senior housing project that's nearing completion at 44th and Yarrow, and the two phases of the Town Center North. The reason I call those projects out is that they all involved retaining walls for practical site reasons, and they all involved large footprint, single elevation structures, right? I mean, the Town Center North is multi-story structures, but because they were all designed for senior, potentially somewhat impaired mobility, you can't have grade changes inside those buildings, right? So, so you've got a single level inside those buildings for them to meet their functional needs, and that becomes a challenge, when you've got a large footprint that wants to be a single-story or two-story, just because of the practical needs of the buildings. So we get all those issues. We're not, we're not going to make those issues go away. But we also think that with a few just tools and language in the code, that we can, we can also have an ability to improve the appearance of some of these facilities and take those opportunities. Right now, it's just, we'd be overstepping our bounds to kind of regulate that without having a code section that says we can regulate that. So that's, that's our, I think, our goal here. Lisa, I don't know if anything to...
I think you summarized it well.
Okay. So kind of a new topic for you all, but we tried to give a few graphics in there to maybe help you understand the situation, whether it be, you know, again, material, materials that you can put on the face of a wall, even if it's a concrete wall, you know, just a little bit of landscaping somehow to soften the view of a wall sometimes. You know, it might only be two or three feet that allows you to get a decent little shrub bed in there. That just goes a long way towards minimizing the visibility of some of those kind of harsher concrete structures. And again, terracing, I think, is often just beneficial when you're looking at retaining walls, that they just, particularly when they're in a pedestrian environment, feel a little, a little softer urban design.
So you're looking for ability to suggest, but not necessarily insist? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Yes. We, like most of our design standards, we, you know, we try not to be too prescriptive, right? I mean, it's, we give people a variety of options. And frankly, our public works engineering staff have been great in terms of allowing for alternative detention facilities and water quality facilities. They're very creative in terms of allowing underground detention, permeable pavers when the soils are right. So we're all doing some, we're already doing some creative engineering things, and this is just kind of layering on top of that, some more creative, just more aesthetic things.
Council? Mr. M?
So this would allow us to be able to do that, because we'd actually have, you're talking about an ordinance, correct?
Yes, this would involve changes to likely the zoning code, chapter 26, as well as some of our design standards, potentially like the Architecture on Site Design Manual.
Okay. I'm excited about this, only because I think if we're, you know, if we can dress up anything a little bit better to make it a little bit more appealing, I think it's, you know, it's a step in the right direction. So I'm supporting this and happy to see this.
Great.
Mr. Matthews?
Do we currently have any local regulations or what have you on the books as far as altering stormwater flow onto an adjacent property, and restrictions thereto, both residential and commercial?
Right. I'm not sure I can give you a complete answer to that. I mean, I think that's certainly best practice when it comes to designing a stormwater detention facility as part of a, when it meets the one-acre threshold that triggers, that it goes through the full public works review. We're certainly going to look carefully at how that, that water exits the property and doesn't have a negative impact. When it comes to single-family development, or, you know, additions, we have a little less regulatory control. And to some extent, to some extent, it becomes a bit of a civil issue.
And to some extent, to some extent, it becomes a bit of a civil issue. Having said that, we're aware that it's an issue, and there's been some kind of one-off cases where we've had some situations that we've had to figure out and kind of insert ourselves to come up with solutions with property owners. And we've been consciously kind of making, we actually just changed some of our best practices in terms of, we've been, my department, my management team has been working with the Public Works Management Team to refine some of our coordination efforts in that regard. And that's one of the topics that we've identified. We're getting some of the Public Works Engineering Inspectors involved in part of that single-family permit inspection process so that we make sure that some of those issues get addressed upfront.
Yeah, my question really kind of was then, if we're not doing that now while we're talking about this topic, why would we exclude single-family homes, anything, you know, smaller than an acre, and not make a comprehensive policy?
And I think...
For all sizes.
It's a great observation and question, and I think we are. It just looks a little different in terms of, we wouldn't probably drill down this deep in terms of those requirements. But we're, for instance, we're now making sure that we're looking at grading plans for single-family homes, all three divisions, right? So building, planning, and public works. So we're all going to be taking a look at that to make sure that we're bird-dogging that upfront so that we don't have issues between private property owners when those historic patterns change.
Anyone else? Mr. Pond.
So I guess just to start, I'll say I am supportive of this. It's something that I've certainly noticed in some of the recent developments. So I think this is a great start. And then I have two questions. One procedural is, will this be similar to what you just described on item two, where this has not gone yet to the Planning Commission? So you'll do a study session, and then any of these changes will go through a Planning Commission and then a first and second read for City Council?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. And then my additional question, and perhaps I'm missing it, but I just want to see if you, it doesn't really talk as much about the siting as much as some of the more technical things about, you know, grading and splitting and adjacencies. But when you were doing it, is there any conversation about where, for instance, stormwater facilities are proposed within a process? Or is that just going to happen through the normal course of review?
I think normal course of review, but perhaps responding to what I think part of the question there is, is that some of the language that we proposed, and I'm not going to pull it right up here, but alludes to the fact that design should be treated more carefully when they're visible from the public or adjacent to public spaces. So we're kind of acknowledging that it's those locations that we really want to address. If you can bury your detention pond, just because of how grading works, at the back of your lot, that's not going to be visible to many people. You might be able to do a more kind of industrial design.
Okay, yeah. And I mean, and that would be my request, and I'm sure the Planning Commission will discuss this, but there's certainly been a couple of cases, again, I won't name them by names, but where, you know, you wonder whether the actual location of that stormwater facility, there wouldn't have been other options that would have put it in a less visible location than sometimes what I see. And certainly, I think that's part of this. And you've addressed a lot of things about how to mitigate it and soften it, make it safer, make it more integrated. I do think overall siting, I hope, will be part of the conversation moving forward.
Anyone else?
Anna Mae.
Yes, Mr. Urban.
Thank you. My main concern is it relates to those projects within the city, and this may or may not be applicable, but as it relates to those projects specifically, like with respect to Wazir Boulevard, how does the retaining wall aspect affect any particular Public Works projects within the city? And do these design standards apply to the city Wheat Ridge projects that we're looking at? And do those, do these design standards represent additional cost to those projects? And what would those costs be, or those additional costs to adhere to these particular design standards?
Right. I'm not sure we've had a good discussion about how these would or wouldn't apply to city projects or Public Works projects. I think it's a good question, and we can be thinking about that as we move forward with this. And in terms of the, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Well, I'm just thinking about...
Cost. Yes, I mean, we're sensitive to that. And I think the answer is yes. I mean, there certainly are some costs associated with this. We don't think they're significant. I mean, it's things like, you know, if, you know, instead of, you might skin a concrete wall with some veneer material, or you might use more natural types of stone materials when creating the wall. So it's certainly, there is certainly a small delta there, but I don't think, we don't think it's going to be significant. You know, landscaping, I think, again, it's, you know, you might lose three more feet of developable land to create a strip of ground, or five feet to add some landscaping in an area that's going to maybe screen one of these facilities. So there are costs, we'd like to think, and, you know, I'm not the developer, so it's easy for me to say, I suppose, but that they're on the margins for sure.
Well, I guess the overarching concerns that I have as it relates to the undeveloped land in Wheat Ridge and it relates to the Clear Creek Crossing project and other sort of clean slates as we're dealing with have specific, you know, stormwater facility needs, and those are going to be representing specific costs in those developments. And these specific design standards are going to represent, I would imagine, not minuscule costs in those types of projects. I just want to make sure that we're conscious of these types of decisions that we're making. And while it would be nice to have a cleaner or better-looking wall, it is still a functional wall without those design standards. And that's, you know, we need more functional stormwater facilities than nicer-looking stormwater facilities. So that's where I would lean, is to make sure that we're getting those stormwater facilities in place as opposed to making them look nice. So I'd be hesitant to push for this. I'm not necessarily against it, but I'm just cautious against going for this in concern for some of the costs involved.
Did I hear that that was going to be some of the general concern anyway, as far as the development cost and the, you know, the lack of desire to come? Just, it's kind of a balance, is what I'm trying to say.
I mean, that's the approach that we're certainly taking, is that, you know, we kind of tried to acknowledge, I think, that, you know, we can't, you know, avoid retaining walls, right? It's not like we're going to come in and say, well, just give us a nice landscape swale with five-to-one slopes and turf grass. I mean, it's just, that's not our reality. So I think it's just a matter of being a little more sensitive to design and the cost and the property impacts.
Baby steps. Anyone else need to ask, or? We don't have to actually...
Tim's got a question.
Oh, sorry.
So we're looking for the two questions that are support for addressing design standards, et cetera. And does somebody want to give us that? Tim, are you going to?
I asked for consensus on what you just said.
Okay, and the two items? Okay, looks like we're good for you guys to go forward.
Keep us busy.
Keep you busy.
Thank you.
Elected officials' reports. Any committees you belong to that you would like to report on? Ms. Davis?
Just quickly, we have a renewal Wheat Ridge meeting tomorrow. It's a pretty short agenda, a lot of it's looking over the budget. And then we'll have a, I think, one that's a little bit more detailed. I think it's December 20th, but I'll report back when I know exactly. Is that right, Patrick? December 20th, too? So we're going to have two in December. So one next week, or one tomorrow, and then one two weeks from tomorrow.
Mr. Fitzgerald? They missed this time, didn't they?
For those who live close to what will be Clear Creek Crossing, there's a neighborhood meeting tomorrow in the rec center at 5:00.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30, right. Mr. Matthews?
Not tonight, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe in tomorrow's Denver Post, there's a quick article about the end of the Gold Line development and the base camp of the Rockies.
The Wheat Ridge Business District did not meet this meeting this month. We didn't have any completed applications. We have some applications that people are working on, but nothing completed, so we didn't meet this month. And then also, I'd like to invite everybody to join me on December 22nd at the Gathering Spot, which is 6690 West 38th Avenue for an information and cookie exchange. So if you bring cookies, then we'll have a little cookie pop, and everybody can take some cookies home from 6:00 to 7:30, Thursday, December 22nd.
What was the date again, December?
22nd.
22nd. You rolled that out there so fast. Mr. M.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Might as well ask the city clerk, he's sitting right there.
Yeah, this, I just wanted to share with you that I, along with one other council member, were the committee for the very first Architectural and Streetscape Design Manual back in the day.
Back in the day.
Yeah. That's since been redone. And I think that's all.
City manager, would you like to make a comment about that meeting?
Which meeting?
The meeting tomorrow night, so that kind of people realize that there's this one plus many more.
Sure. As part of our normal processes, you're talking about the Clear Creek Crossing. The developer for Clear Creek Crossing is required to have a neighborhood meeting before they submit an application for an official development plan, and they are scheduled to do that tomorrow. Residents and property owners within a 600-foot radius were notified of the meeting. Again, the intent of this meeting is really to provide an opportunity for those people that are going to be most directly impacted by development, by traffic, light, noise, and sound, to have an opportunity to hear about the development. The developer, though, does have a multi-phased outreach plan in place to communicate with the whole community and get some input and comments on what the community would like to see out there, what type of stores, what type of restaurants. They should have a website up next, it could be up even tomorrow, they said Tuesday, I don't know if they meant this Tuesday or next Tuesday, so I'll let you know on that. We'll talk about progress and show you plans and designs and so, and the city's working on a robust communication plans to plan to make sure that the community as a whole is up to speed on the project. There's, it's still fairly, what's the right word? Vague, if that's the right word, but early in the process, there's not a lot of details about final tenants and end-users. So don't want anybody to be too disappointed at this point. There's not going to be tons of information right now. It's all about traffic and access and noise and stuff like that. But the more, hopefully, as we go down the process, there'll be more and more information, which we'll definitely share. Yes, Mr. Matthews?
Has the passage of 2E affected schedule one way or the other on development there, well, Clear Creek Crossing?
It hasn't really. It's kind of, the timing is actually perfect for that project. They, the developers, planning hopefully to close on the properties by the end of, or almost, let's see, December, today's the 5th, isn't it? December 15th in less than two weeks. And they were always planning to do that. I think their schedule, if the project moves forward, was planning for development sometime the end of next year, mid, into next year, starting. And the passage of 2E, which will help fund the hook ramps off I-70, could fall right along with the same, with the construction progress. So it's good timing.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
I don't think so. Just, well, real quickly, you all should have received an email from Heather Bergman, a facilitator, that we're going to start, George and I sat down and put a schedule together for kind of a phased strategic planning process. The first one would be just a shorter one, had a study session on December 19th to send you off to Christmas, so we can start having some initial discussions about visioning and goals and what they are and what you want to do. And I think we have a couple other meetings scheduled right after the first of the year and hopefully build up to maybe a more formal retreat where we can really sit down and get into the weeds. So if you haven't reached, if you haven't heard from the facilitator, Heather, or if you have, please give her some dates so that you can have an interview with her, and she can get to know you, and you can provide some information to her. Have you all heard from her? Have you all gotten an email? Okay, great.
That's it. We had a great holiday lighting, a lot of our, a lot of councilors were there, it was great. It was enjoyable. Ate cookies, drank chocolate, you know, all the important things. And we had a visit from Frosty the Snowman, which was kind of fun. I believe that's it. I think it's good night.